An opposition and also a few in support of the project. But you have those with you, and then I think there are a few people here to speak. So I'll just leave up the staff recommendation for those applications and then take any questions.
Thanks, Lisa. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Gifford?
Just one question, Lisa, and that is you mentioned that it's been R2B since, I think you said, the mid 70s?
Correct.
So its prior use was an electrical substation. I was just kind of curious, how did it get to be R2B with that kind of use there?
I believe it was just kind of a wide swath of R2B zoning there in the 70s, and so that's kind of...
I see. Thanks.
Mr. Cronin. I have a few questions. So the CUP for height is based on the number of stories and not the number of feet?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then it's mentioned in the staff report, is this a historic building that's on the National Register or it's eligible?
Sorry, I meant to mention that. So this building has been identified in previous historic surveys as a potential historic resource, but it's not designated locally or nationally. But one survey did note that it could be eligible for both.
A little maybe this is more for the applicant, but the area well back comes up to the property line or the back of the sidewalk?
Correct. Sorry, the property line. There's a few feet between the sidewalk and the property line.
That's two feet in height.
Correct.
Okay. Then the proposed continuation of that for the patios, that's at the same height and the same location?
Correct.
Okay. And then the patios themselves, so it's a two-foot retaining wall, and then is there any landscaping and hard space? Or is it all just hard space? Or is there fences or any landscaping in those areas?
As far as I understand it, it's essentially a metal grate over the area way and no fences or landscaping.
What about the areas to the east? That's not part of the...
To the east, it actually extends all the way to the rear property line, and so the alley is just right there.
Okay. Okay. And then I have a question about the house across the alley. It appears there is no front porch. There's a stoop and an enclosed, a little portion that sticks out. Sorry, I couldn't hear. It wasn't very clear last night. What looks to be a porch is actually part of the house. Is that true?
Um...
I don't know. I'm sure...
I believe it's an enclosed porch.
Okay. And it seems like it's heavy landscape. Doesn't appear to be an outdoor space, I guess is my question.
Correct.
Is that true? Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right. There are no further questions of staff. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Just so I have a sense, how many of you wish to speak on this item? Several of you. I'll ask the applicant to speak first, and please state your name and address for the record. I've got, yeah. If you don't mind in your presentation, address kind of the need for the variances that you're requesting. I'm sorry. I was just going to ask to be sure to address your perceived need for the variances that you're requesting.
Yes. It is a, it is a USP. Introduce yourself.
I'm Karen Parker.
And I'm...
Go ahead.
I can introduce myself. And I'm Aaron Parker, and we live at 4511 Lyndale Avenue South in Minneapolis. And I've been aware of this building for like 20 years, and when I saw that they were in there doing something, I went up and asked questions about it, and they told me what they were doing, and I asked what the story was, and they said, well, somebody's already spoken for it. But I got the number anyway and called, and there were actually three people in front of us, two people in front of us for this property, and the cooler heads prevailed, and it wound up coming to us. We're really excited about this building, which was built in 1911. The guy who caused it to be built actually worked for Edison, worked with Tesla, went to Westinghouse, and ran Westinghouse before he came out here. He created the first hydroelectric plant in the Western Hemisphere on the walls of St. Anthony. And then, huh, well, doesn't matter. Anyway, so this building has been identified as an historic, historic resource. Is this like not loading up or what's the story? And we would like to, in fact, in order to make the project viable, we have to pursue a National Register designation for this building. We are requesting putting in four units and a small co-working space that we will operate. Karen can speak a little bit to what we intend to do with that. We see ourselves as public citizens and really want to make this a, you know, a public place. Its location on the park makes that a little bit easier. I won't speak too much to the... I'd like to reserve time to respond to, you know, issues about, about the zoning change, if I may, if that becomes an issue. And rather speak to the two items that were denied. I really like to thank staff for their help, and I apologize for not explaining what I was doing in the corner side, side yard as well. You raised some good questions as well, which I will answer if this thing ever opens. It's not opening. Okay. Well. One of the things that we would like to do with this, with this project is demonstrate that there are types of housing between the single-family house and the larger apartment blocks such as we're seeing developing on the north side of the Midtown Greenway, for instance, which would be wholly inappropriate for this area. The reason that we requested the OR1 is specifically because the massing and the intensity of use are in keeping with the neighborhood. This block, this property is a block... Is this not going to do this? Is a block off of Lyndale Avenue, and the park itself is, I mean, the building is in the view shed from Lyndale as well. So although it is in an urban, urban neighborhood, based on the comp plan, it actually participates in community core kind of area, and I think because it's on the edge like that, it's important. One of the reasons I think that's important is because the Met Council says in their 2040 plan that we are expecting 825,000 new people to be here by 2040. That's 400,000 new households. If they go to the suburbs, we're going to have some big problems. Minneapolis is kind of on the, at a make or break point. I think the city has done some amazing things, and we could be the best city in the country if we do our job right as private citizens and as a city. And, well, you know. Try what? Oh. Oh, okay. Anyway, let me address, as long as, there will be illustrations later, but in terms of, in terms of the patios, the patios are actually 55 square feet of paved area. I understand that they're six foot four by eight foot eight each. There are two of them. One has the grading so that you can actually let light into the basement and actually has a hatch to get for egress windows from two demised spaces down there. And then the rest of that terrace, level terrace area is going to be landscaped. So it's, it's actually, we're at 55 square feet instead of 50, and, you know, the setbacks on the building, as you saw, are, I mean, the building is where it is. It's seven feet from the property line back to the base of the building, and, but those, those patios are south-facing, which is a benefit. And so we would like to have south-facing patios like all of the, all of the residences in the same block of 34th Street, which all face south, even the one that's facing, on the corner facing the park, looks south. And I think, you know, that, that sort of solar advantage is something that we're looking at as a plus, and we'd like to, we'd like to take advantage of that. There is other landscaping around, you know, shrubs and stuff like that, edges at that point.
Mr. Steiner, maybe staff has a visual overview that you could use to talk through the variances while we're waiting for the presentation?
I suppose I could do some of that.
We have it in our package.
Yeah.
There's all your plans.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So that's, that's the building from all four sides. And, and this is, this is a figure ground showing the buildings and then what's not building in black. The park, that's the property here. So you can see that this, you know, this corner and its relationship to, you know, to the park is, you know, it's a really, you know, positive kind of connection diagonally across to the baseball diamond. Historically, that on the, on the left here, that this was a public well that, where people would actually come with their Red Wing jugs and bring, and bring water home. Similar to the public space, this happens to be Pienza, and the well in the town square was a gathering place and so on and so forth, and we see this kind of use on, not that people would be coming there for water, but, but the idea of having a real sort of public space in the tradition of Fish Fest or a National Night Out or, you know, a snow angel contest after, after snowfall or community, community meal kind of thing, sorts of stuff that we've been talking about doing. Outside of what would be, this, this is the, the commercial space, which is a co-working space, which there are a lot of home offices in, in the neighborhood in order to get a copy, Xerox someplace. You've got to get in your car and drive to Uptown now. If you want, if you want to do like a large run or get a high-quality copy, and what we would, what we are intending is that, is that we would have access to, you know, to our machine in this location to do that as well as other, actually, I'll let Karen speak to this a little bit.
Our intention is to not have it just...
13 commercial properties along 33rd Street from Lake Calhoun down to Nicollet, which is more than all but 36th Street and Lake Street. You know, we think about, you know, 35th as being, you know, a street, but 33rd, I was, I was quite, I found that quite amazing, and they're all kind of walking distance from one another. You can actually, some of the photographs, you can stand and, you know, outside the sort of dual guys down unpleasant and, and see all the way down, and you can see, you know, you can't see all the way to Bryant where canteen is, but, but you can see, you know, a number of them, and this is one of those that is placed a block from the hairdresser and so forth. If I may, you know, reserve my time to respond.
Okay. And I assume your presentation is still copying over. Maybe we can just let it sit for a few more minutes, or maybe, Lisa, you can take, take a look at it, and that way later, if we need to refer to any of the photos or anything.
Okay.
Right. Commissioner Cronin, do you have a question for the applicant?
A couple of questions for the applicant. So in the large, the corner is clearly trying to orient itself to the park, but what is north of the stairs? It looks like, is that green space or a sloping hill?
Yes.
So that's green space, and then there's, looks like a handicap ramp, and then additional green space to the north property line.
Yeah, that's, there you go.
Okay. Want to go back to the, the patios again for a minute. So the existing area well, that is entirely covered in a metal grate?
The existing, there are two area wells, one next to the other existing, and they're relatively small. They're, they're the ones that are hidden behind the bushes in the, in this photograph. You can kind of see some bushes over there, or maybe you can't, but they're there. Five, five windows down, there's, and those are relatively small. There are actually masonry openings in the basement that, that are egress size. And then we'd be putting another one in a little bit further down, so there would be grading over, over both of those. So I think the, it's about 25 feet of grading, but the patio part would be, you know, less than half of that would be eight foot eight inches.
Okay. And that's the, that's the patio for, I think it's unit number two?
That's for...
Apartment number two?
Yeah, for apartment two.
And then the patio for apartment one is, like you said, 55 square feet plus landscaping around it?
Yeah, it would be grass, you know, on either side of it.
And then there's, there's no fencing. It's just, it's basically landscaping and hard scaping.
Well, we would use, we would use hedging.
Hedging, yeah. Good. That clears that up. And what about bike parking? Bicycle parking?
There's a dozen bicycle stalls in the three garages, and, and we have, I, you know, I was a racing cyclist back in the day. I've been a cyclist for decades, and I'm really committed to it. In earlier schemes, we actually had a bicycle maintenance station on the property, a public bicycle maintenance station, but that kind of went away.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Slack.
I think the, the last time we saw this proposal was very different, and at the time I, I thought that you didn't own the property. Do you own the property now?
We are, because the property is essentially of no use without a zoning change, we didn't want to run rashly into this and buy the property and not be able to do anything with it. You can only do duplex on this property, and it's a very expensive renovation.
I guess another comment is, I appreciate the gesture of the, kind of the civic space out at the street edge. Did you look at alternatives that would fit within the setback variance to create that civic space without having to require variance?
Yeah, I did, but again, you know, the notion of sort of reaching out, you know, towards the park, you know, it's, you know, we think, you know, the terrace holds the corner of a corner lot. The argument was made that, well, you know, it's, it's not consistent with the Garfield frontage, which is, you know, which is entirely residential. Well, a corner lot has significantly different urbanistic obligations than, than a standard mid-block lot has. It has to turn the corner properly. It has to hold the corner of the park, which you can see in, oh, is that photograph here someplace, please? You know, it really, you know, it really needs to hold, you know, hold the corner of the park strongly. And there it is. That's, you can see how the ensemble of buildings there, those, this building here and then our building, and then this relatively, you know, blocky mass of two-story stucco building on this side really defines the corner of, of the park. It's not, and, and to have, you know, a sort of standard, you know, single-family house in that location really erodes that spatial definition and really takes away from the definition of, of the park space itself. So, you know, we think that the whole thing about having that plaza there is that we're really reaching out towards the park in a certain way, and I wanted to go as far, and in fact, into, up to the back of the sidewalk with these stairs so that, so that you really have that, you know, that gesture and that connection. We, you know, there are obviously other things that could be done, but, you know, in, in terms of architecture and landscape, you know, notions, it seems to me that, you know, that this kind of, you know, over enthusiastic response is probably not terrible.
Mr. Parker, you had, or I should say, Lisa mentioned in her staff report that the steps and plaza would also require an encroachment permit.
That's correct.
Because not, not only does it go up to the property line, but it extends into the public right-of-way. Do you have a sense of any utilities that are in that area, or do you have any concern about the steps? Obviously, that would be a pretty substantial investment being disrupted if, if there is a need to get in there for whatever reason.
Well, that's a, that's a good question, and if, you know, we're asking permission to do this. It may well turn out that, that cooler heads prevail and, and we, and we roll that back, but, you know, we're asking, you know, for those permissions. In fact, you know, if, if this, you know, again, we're, this is also going to be a lot more expensive than just doing it, you know, the way we normally would, but again, this is the sort of thing that, that we think is better urbanism. And, and so that's, that's why we're asking for this, because we want to demonstrate that it's important to be responsible. It used to be. I've got, I have press clippings from 1922 where, where developers came in just a couple of blocks from here and offered to build an entire linear park, you know, all the way down to, almost to Nicollet, if they would be allowed to develop the properties on either side of it. What happened to that? I mean, you know, now it's like, well, if you don't give me the tiff, I'm going to the next town. What happened? We...
Okay. Are there, yeah, maybe we should move on to some other speakers. And I understand several of you would like to speak, so we can start over at this end of the room, and I will just ask, because it is getting late, that you be mindful of not simply repeating things others have said and keep your remarks fairly brief. So who would like to go first? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Devin Hogan, and I'm here to recruit you. I live at 31 West 35th Street in the Lyndale neighborhood, and I am a homeowner. I've owned my house there for six years because for some reason that gives you cachet in this city. But I'm not here as a homeowner in that capacity. I'm here in the capacity as a millennial, 31 years old, and there are 83 million people in my generation, 83 million. Let me repeat that. Biggest generation in United States history, bigger than the boomers and possibly the largest ever we will see. And people like me are moving to Minneapolis at the rate of 1,000 people a month. And people like me want to live in urban areas. Specifically, the reason why I moved into my neighborhood and bought my house there was as a U of M student, had express bus lines to the U and the Nicollet bus that goes to downtown. So I was attracted to this neighborhood because of its urbanness, and as a homeowner there, I just feel like I really have no option, right? You know, I've got my five-bedroom house that's completely useless for someone like me. What am I going to do with a five-bedroom house? Even if I have two kids, five bedrooms is still too many. But I still want to stay in my neighborhood. There's no place for somebody like me to go except for a proposal like this, an extremely reasonable proposal to turn a decrepit, decaying industrial property into a place that people want to live. Now, we'll probably hear from a lot of neighbors about how terrible that is to put more residences on a residential neighborhood, you know, on a residential street where residences don't belong. But I just want to strongly voice my support because there's a lot of people like me out there, and the city, I think, for its part, has been paying attention and doing the right thing. One of the things, including the parking, not having to build structured parking for units like this. And part of the reason, again, why I live in my neighborhood is because they don't have to have a car, and I haven't had one since I've lived here. And so I just want you guys to understand that of all the people like me that would support such a thing, there's probably not one in this room because we have jobs that we have to work, and the economy is stacked against us, so we're working all the time. So again, I just want to add my voice, say it very loudly in honor of all the people that are absent from here, and also want to say that I approve, support you guys approving the variances to the side yard because I think that as someone who plays kickball in that park, it's kind of cool to be able to just go across the street and have a vantage point and sit and watch the games and things like that. And to not really allow a simple variance such as that is sort of, is not very forward-thinking. You know, I think that we consider ourselves a progressive city, but, you know, it's a, I understand that there's, the zoning and rules exist for a reason, but that kind of variance, I think, will truly bring the kind of urban character that's been missing from there all along. So that's about it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker would like to go next. Yes, state your name and address.
Sure. My name is John Law. I live at 3213 Garfield, so I'm in the block on the same side of the street. So I'm in the block on the same side of the street as the development. I wrote a letter to Lisa, so I'm, I'm suspecting that would be included in your packet already. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. I appreciate you guys staying late. And just basically, just to reiterate, the zoning change isn't consistent with the rest of the street. It's creating an island in the middle of a residential zoning area. And I think one thing that hasn't been discussed is parking. Parking on our street, our block is really at a premium. Past six o'clock at night, you're lucky if you can find a place to park. And that's, all the people that live on the east side of the street have garages and are utilizing them, but we have so many units. I think we have eighty-eight units, ninety-seven units on this block already. So there just is no place to park. And even if you looked in some of those pictures that were up there, they were taken during the day and you'll notice cars all around that building, cars around the park. It's very difficult if any of us want to have friends over relatives, there's, they literally have to walk for several blocks to get to our homes. So I know that in this latest iteration of the, the plan, there are three parking spots and it just doesn't seem like enough. The other thing is, I think one of you iterated to or reiterated that you've seen multiple versions of this plan and those of us in the neighborhood have also seen. And this was, the, the version that you saw tonight was not the version that the neighborhood was presented. We were presented with a plan where there were seventeen units on this site. So we were really adamantly opposed to that. And it, it seems like what would be great is for Aaron to come back, Mr. Parker to come back to the neighborhood, re-present this plan so we could get a good look at it.